This is the work session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County, Cochise, and state of Arizona. Held on Monday, October nineteen, twenty twenty at five thirty P M via Zoom. Ms. Coronado, which call the role.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacomo.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein. She's not on yet, but she will be joining us. City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, James Ledbetter, city attorney.
Thank you. We have one item tonight. First, I'll indicate that we have twenty-five people asking to speak at Call of the Public. It's a work session. There is no call of the public. So I am going to request staff provide those twenty-five comments via email to all of the council before tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, so my question is, why was it put on the agenda that they could submit? Letters that would be read.
That's
agenda.
That's all. Well, no, it's not on the agenda. It's on the
The work session, it's on the work session thing. That went out.
Yes, and it indicates that that's that's always up there. But where it says agenda, it's the items under agenda that are on the agenda.
So then it's kind of misleading to the public thinking that they can speak, I would think.
Perhaps.
I do apologize. I did leave that on there and I should have removed it.
And that's why I'm asking that they all be provided to you. So we have one item. That's discussion, the request for proposal for animal care services. This was originally requested by Ms. Johns and Ms. Giacomo. And then their request was withdrawn. Then I indicated that I did want it put on anyway. Because I felt it was an important subject that was misleading. A lot of people didn't understand it.
I'm gonna let my cat out.
I don't know what you just said.
She's gonna let her cat out.
Thank you. Speaking of animal care, okay. So with that, I will ask Ms. Coleman and Mr. Ledbetter to discuss what an RFP is.
All right.
Coleman, do you want me to go first or do you want to start with your preference?
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, and obviously, a request for proposals is an opportunity to get information to provide to council to make, let council make an informed decision moving forward. And I should disclose to all council members, I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of you. But a little bit of the history here with respect to the shelter contract would be the city manager asked me to prepare a renewed contract and review the old contract and prepare one during the course of that process. I've done so. I've reached out to some leaders of the of the shelter and the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter in particular. And they provided frankly, some good information, some good insights. They they provided a very good contract that another jurisdiction has entered into. And so we reviewed that. I incorporated some of those provisions, utilized the existing provisions and made some modifications. But during the course of preparing that, it begged the question that I had to ask because this is an eighty thousand dollar a year contract, which triggers the state procurement code. Under the state procurement code, as you all know, anytime a contract is for services valued at five thousand dollars or more, it's supposed to go through a bid process. So that a city council doesn't enter into a single bid arrangement without having done that underlying work of receiving proposals and information about potential alternatives. And that doesn't mean anybody's precluded at all. But it's a consideration of alternative proposals and it's just required by statute. So as we dug down with the direction of your city manager and we reviewed this, the underlying contract had not gone through a proposal process. It had never been vetted through an RFP process. So I explained to the city manager that I couldn't come to council and say renew a contract that potentially should have gone through a proposal process early on. Didn't know that at the inception because that proposal process would have happened back in two thousand sixteen. And I just was unaware of it. So as we dug down, both she and I, we discovered probably that there was a problem there in the underlying contract and it probably needed to go through proposal process so it complied with the state procurement code. I do not believe the contract, which is now expired. But I do not believe that underlying contract went through the appropriate process. I did reach out to the attorney that was involved at the time and they have confirmed both that individual who originally negotiated the agreement is no longer employed at the agency, the county attorney's office. But I have confirmed that it did not go through a proposal process in the underlying contract. So my obligation to you as council members is to say, gotta put the brakes on a little bit. We gotta look at that option. And there's been a number of questions asked and it is my opinion that under the city of Bisbee's code that the city manager can go out for RFPs without counsel indicating one way or another. That is within the city manager's authority to request an RFP. In this particular instance, before the renewal contract would be entered into, it is my opinion, and I stand by this, and I apologize to all of you for any consternation that happened to the community. But we cannot identify that the original contract subject to renewal went through the appropriate process. It's greater than five thousand. It's eighty thousand dollars a year. It needs to go through the process before I can tell you to renew any contract. So accordingly, it is my legal opinion that the process needs to resume. There should be an RFP. I've shared that with your city manager. I reviewed the RFP that she issued. And accordingly, and again, RFP is a broad offer, right? That entities come forward and give suggestions, what they can offer, what they disagree with the RFP. That's all okay. So I'm hopeful that the organization that's participated in shelter services in Bisbee will be a participant in the RFP. They should be. But at the end of the day, I can't endorse any sort of renewal contract or relationship going forward. I can't tell you that it's okay. Because I am now confident the underlying contract did not comply with state law. So accordingly, I have to advise you of that and tell you, I think a step back needs to happen. I think there needs to be an RFP process and I support the city manager's decision to go out there for an RFP. Because I don't think there's any other choice. But moreover, I would emphasize for you that under your city code, the city manager does have the the authority to go out and get an RFP, which is just to gather information so that he or she can present to you the underlying information gathered so that you can make an informed decision when the potential bidders come forward. And so you're fully in the know. So that's a prerogative and a power under the city code that's reserved to the city manager. And it's appropriate for her to do that irrespective of whether this underlying legal issue had not surfaced. She in fact had the authority to go out and do that. So that being said, it was coexistent with my legal advice that's very necessary that this process occur so that you as council members can make an informed decision about cost, about benefit, and look at that in terms of your fiduciary obligation to make sure you're expending public tax dollars in an appropriate manner.
Thank you.
Manager, I may have spoken too much.
Yeah. I I did wanna add one thing if I could, Mr. Ledbetter. You indicated state law. However, also, that's the situation under our own charter. Section eight point oh two and our city code, section three point five point four. Correct. And I should have so stated. Thank you. Yes, sir. Ms. Coleman, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think that there was some question about what was included in the RFP. So I did go to your current city code regarding animals and the requirement that the city currently puts on itself to care for animals that have been taken into custody. So that was the source of the information included in the RFP.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
First of all, Mr. Higgins, this is
So I I obviously have been misinformed for some time because I was, my understanding was that there was a partnership agreement of some sort which covered this, but I guess from what Mr. Ledbetter has said that the whatever partnership agreement may or may not have been agreed to, that's not valid. Is it correct, Mr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Councilmember Higgins. Maybe a little more complicated than that. You know, I'm not inclined to throw stones toward anyone. But to renew an existing contract, I think the underlying contract had to have gone through an appropriate process. And I want everybody to understand, I'm not suggesting that the performance of the contract was in any way inappropriate. In fact, I have no evidence to suggest that. But what I'm saying is to enter into a new process under both, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, under both the city processes and also under the state procurement code, we have to see what alternatives are out there before you can spend taxpayer dollars in order to pursue that if the amount of the contract is more than five thousand dollars. Here it is. So for a renewal contract that the city manager directed me to prepare, it has not been fully vetted by the other side yet because we hit the significant roadblock of saying, well, wait a minute. We have to go out and find out who can be the appropriate person to enter into a contract. So it may become necessary by council direction at subsequent time that I enter into a contract or draft a contract for your consideration, better said. I draft a contract for your consideration that involves somebody completely differently. But that said, my assumption is that the existing shelter operator will be a participant in the RFP process. And it may well be them. And so we can use the work that's already been done in order to accomplish that. So I gave you a long-winded lawyerly answer and my apologies, Councilmember Higgins. But the bottom line is, I don't think we can renew a contract that was not properly vetted in the first instance. And there may have been good motivation to enter into the contract at that time. I can't identify it and I can't find any exception as to why a contract more than five thousand dollars did not go through a request for qualifications and or a request for proposal process.
Thank you. Ms. Giacomo.
Okay, so that contract was up in June, was it not? The original contract, didn't it expire in June?
Yes.
So my
That's right, from twenty sixteen.
First question is, why did it take until now to figure out that it had never gone through that? Why hadn't that been figured out before the contract had even expired so that this could have been addressed in June or before June? That's my first question. And secondly, my other question is, is we're always told about RFPs that are being written, except this one. We were not notified of. I'm just curious why we didn't get notified of this one, that I, we had to hear about it when it got posted. That's my first question.
So let me, I I can't answer the second portion. I can address the first question. The first question was, you know, I honestly, I was under the assumption that an underlying agreement had been properly vetted because it was more than five thousand dollars. So during the process of reaching out, doing some level of negotiation, reaching this, we agreed to go to a month-to-month payment, meaning the city agreed to go to a month-to-month payment to continue paying the money to the existing shelter operator. And that has occurred. So there was nothing ill toward toward the existing operator by continuing that and allowing the same monthly payment to continue while all these things came together. I was in fact operating under the assumption that it, that because it's been in place for four years, right? And for four years, it's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the city. I was under the assumption that it had been and had gone through procurement process before. And it was at the end of the drafting of the agreement that the city manager and I began asking those questions because she and I weren't here four years ago. As we asked those questions, it's kind of hard to go back and find evidence that doesn't exist. So it did take us some time to discover that. And I have met with the attorneys involved at the time and they've confirmed what we suspected to be true, that there was not in fact a procurement code process initiated with respect to this agreement. So the delay, I own it because I made a bad assumption.
I I I just for the record, I I know you got the three twenty from eighty thousand times four. It started off at sixty. Sixty, that's correct. That's correct. And then it went to seventy and then Seventy, and then it was eighty. That's correct. Yes.
So my my apologies in terms of the numeric number, but I was looking at the current contract. You're right.
Of course, I I just wanted to make sure that
Thank you.
There's no reason for anybody to write in and say that's not true. That's
Yeah, that was again, my mistake.
Sure. Ms. Giacomo, next question.
I asked that other question as far as why it wasn't, why we weren't notified that it was going out.
I did send an email.
Okay.
Yeah, I did send an email on September twenty-nine thirtieth, somewhere in there. Letting the council members know that in anticipation and the desire to have a contract and that the contract would be for more than five thousand dollars that I would be preparing an RFP.
Correct. I could be wrong, but I also thought it was brought up in managers' minutes.
Ah, no, no, it wasn't. Not, well, I'll go back and look, but
Okay.
I'm just also I'm curious also why there was never a meeting set back in June with the current shelter people and to sit down and discuss the situation.
Frankly, that's that's really off topic, isn't it?
Well, not really. We're talking about the whole legality and, you know.
Well
I don't know, is it, Mr. Ledbetter, am I off topic?
Well, any question can be asked, but but that said, I can tell you candidly that I've strove striven to have a good relationship and frankly, have no I I have no bias one way or another. Folks jump to conclusions that there's a concern here that somebody is trying to be outed. I've never received that instruction and never have acted consistently with that because I don't believe that that to be true. But that said, what brings us here today is kind of a discussion of where the council wants to go with respect to the to the direction of providing support and services in the context of a shelter in the city of Bisbee.
Um. I think we're going kind of down the wrong track. I'm satisfied. You know, that an RFP was necessary to be issued. You know, that's, I'm totally satisfied with that. And I think that really the issue now isn't whether or not an RFP is is issued or going to be issued. I think one has been issued. And I think that the community has issues with the RFP as it's written itself. Rather than, you know, the legality of whether or not it should be. No, I agree that, you know, it should be. That's the legal way to do it.
Right.
But I think the issue now is the way it's written.
I agree. Can I speak?
Uh, Ms. Giacomo.
Uh, yeah, I, one of my big concerns with the RFP, my major concern with the RFP is there's no ad addressing what's going to happen to drop offs, animals, you know, like my aunt dies and I, we can't keep her her dog. Where am I going to take that animal, you know, and that's that's not addressed in the RFP. So if somebody bids and bids low and and that's the one everybody wants because it's cheaper, but it doesn't include that, what are we going to do? And what if those numbers are surpassed by the person that took it with the idea that this is the only amount of animals that are ever handled? You know, that's the the way it's written and the numbers just don't jive with what's gone through that shelter. And I I understand that's pickups by police and pick and the AOC and but that's not a true indication of numbers that have gone through our shelter. And I, that's one of the major concerns I know from many people that have contacted me. You know, it's not addressing the true number of animals that have have been serviced, been homed, et cetera, through our shelter. And our shelter has a very good reputation for how it treats animals and how it treats people for probably the more important thing. The user friendliness of our shelter. And I I get that we have to have an RFP. I'm not arguing with that. I am just concerned the limited amount of not for a better word, information that's in this RFP. And it's not, I don't think it's thorough. And I I'm concerned about that, as is many people. And it's it's not that they're misinformed, that that seems to be the big term that everybody keeps using. People are concerned of the verbiage and lack thereof. I guess that's the best way to put it.
Let me be the devil's advocate and and that's not really the right term. Let let me bring up a other situation. I I don't disagree with some of what you just said for sure. I've been a big supporter of the shelter. Do you believe that our shelter should be in the business of housing animals from other jurisdictions?
Yes, I do, because many other jurisdictions do that. It's kind of what we call an other business. You pack my pack, I'll pack yours when we have a problem. It's not like we're taking tons and tons of animals from other people. There's a shuffle that does occur when you're trying to home animals. Other organizations, i.e. Miranda is one that does it. No Galus does it also. It's kind of a what's the word I'm looking for? A mutual agreement in assisting each other. And, you know, I I don't see a problem with that.
Doesn't Miranda contract with Pima County?
I'm not really sure though, but I do know that they've done business. But I'm just saying, you know what? So we're not, we're going to say, no, absolutely not. I mean, obviously, if there were a hundred dogs coming in, you know, that would be an issue, sure. Or, you know, shelters sometimes come into situations, a legal situation. Let's say we had a hundred cats that got trapped because of our feral problems and we had to hold them for a court case. Where are we going to hold those cats, Dave? So we would have to then ask places like Douglas and places like Sierra Vista. Can you lend us some shelter room here until the court case is over and then we can do something with these animals once it's decided? That's the type of cooperation. It's a cooperative collaboration that that usually goes on with shelters. I mean, that's how shelters operate.
Would we not be, if if that was the case in a court case that you mentioned, actually, if it was evidence, then that would be evidence you're speaking of. And that would be probably the county attorney's office that would be footing a bill to do that.
Not for the ones pressing the charges. And we have that, we, I mean, that's a very good possibility here in town. And we're the ones that are are filing the charges against someone. Say we have a cat hoarder or we have a dog hoarder. You know, it's, I mean, that that it's just a collaboration between different organizations. All municipality organizations collaborate with each other. It's not, I, you know, it's not like we're doing this with hundreds of dogs. You know, or hundreds of cats. I I think it's great that we collaborate. Because if we ever get in a bind, we're not then going to be asking somebody that we've now told, no, sorry, we're not going to help you. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, we're a shelter. We're in the business of homing animals. We're taking animals in that have been dumped. You know, we are taking animals that the police officers and AOC have to take up. We are not a rescue per se. Rescues are generally private and a lot of times out of private people's homes. We do a vast majority of things in this town for our people and our animals. And the fact that we have been no kill except for those few situations where an animal has been sick or it's court ordered, you know, that's, you know, that's going progressively. You know, if we're not staying progressive, then the only direction we're going to go is regressive. And that's, again, that's a big concern. I have
Ms. Giacomo, there's, there's, there's nothing in the RFP that changes that quote, no kill situation.
Really?
It's this, yeah, really.
So where does it say it's not when it says there's
Where does it say it's a kill situation?
It doesn't specifically say kill, but if you're only holding for a specific amount of time, what's going to happen to the animal?
It says, it talks about under the law, which is court order.
Right.
Sick or injured. The same as it is, the same criteria as it is right now. And that our people, that the friends have been operating under, have been doing a fine job operating under.
Yes.
There's been no change.
So, you know, again.
In a minute.
Go ahead, Joan.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Go ahead.
Ms. Klein had a question.
Sorry.
You don't now? Okay. Ms. Hanson.
Okay, when the proposal goes in, aren't all of those issues or all of those requirements? You want, you want to be able to do that. This is saying that it's only for that amount of time for the dog to be reclaimed. At the, you put in your art, your, your proposal, after that, they will be put up for adoption at the shelter. That you you decide or they, you know, the the animal shelter decides what kind of a contract or or proposal they want to put in. And all of that in a no kill and anything of that, that is a concern.
Yes, the 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 situation is that the RFP is worded as to what the city is required by law to do. The bidder can then do anything they want to pass that. But the RFP is what we're required to do. And that's
Exactly.
That's, that's the whole ball of wax right there. Ms. Ms. John.
Um, hello.
Hi.
I have a question. Um, I'm, I think, I don't think anybody has a problem with the RFP. We all want to comply with state law. And the, you know, existence of it, but I have a specific question and it's, um, let's see, it's under number two in the RFP and it's D. And it says, provide appropriate facilities as referenced in the city code and provide for regular inspections by the ACO. So my question is, is this saying that any rescue organization that submits a proposal, they're going to have to have their own facility somewhere? So could you explain that to me, please?
Yes, I've explained that to the friends also. They, part of their proposal would be that we would continue using the existing structure. Our proposal is we will do what the RFP is re is asking with your assistance of still providing the structure, the electricity and water and the maintenance. That's the proposal. That's how proposals are.
Okay.
Well, there's, there's absolutely nothing that says you're not going to use that building or you have to go out and get your own building or or whatever. That's a part of the proposal for us then to look at that and see if that all is fiscally fits. If that is something that we feel, we get the bang for the buck under those circumstances.
Okay, so my next question is, the friends obviously will will know that they can submit this proposal, saying they're going to continue using the facilities that they're in. Is that option going to be open to anyone else who submits a proposal to keep using that building?
Sure, that's anybody's proposal.
Okay. Okay. And I just, I feel like, so this, I'm, from what you're saying, this isn't necessarily a change of direction for the shelter. This is just, the RFP is just the minimum of what needs to happen.
Yes, yes, Ms. John.
Okay.
This is what we as a city are required to do.
Okay.
Under our
I understand that, yeah.
That's right. So there's
Yeah.
You know, e- everybody's up in arms about change and forcing people out. And so there's none of that. If 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 what happens if they're the only bidder? That's fine. We've complied. We've complied with state law.
Mm-hmm.
And city law, Mr. Mayor. And city. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Mayor Pro Tem Paul.
I have thought about this issue for sleepless nights for the last three or four days. And I've talked to a lot of people in the community about their concerns. Number one, a legal issue requires that we send out this RFP. Number two, I have encouraged the staff of the animal shelter to bid this contract so that they can keep doing the good job that they do. Albeit, they will lose some money. That's a fact. Because the city does not want to pay six eighty thousand dollars a year to be a regional animal cons care facility. If the citizens of Bisbee want that to happen, I have no problem with that. The money that we spend is The money that we spend is only 0.67% of our annual budget. That's nothing. And we should pay that if that's what the citizens want. But we need to determine if that's where they want to go. And the way to do that is with a referendum. Right now, let's fix the legal issue, which is get an RFP out there. Get the Bisbee Animal Shelter to bid, in which I've encouraged them to do, to provide their continued service. And then we can deal with the issue of whether or not we want to be a regional animal care facility later on down the line. I'm not excluding that. Like I said, I'm fine with if, if that's what the majority of the people in this community want to do. But right now, we need to, one, legalize the existence of this contract between the Bisbee Animal Shelter and the city. And two, move on to, to the next step, which is where do we want to go? What do we want to be? What does this community want us to be? If we want to be a no-kill animal shelter or animal care facility for the region, which includes Santa Cruz County, Cochise County, and maybe even No Galas Sonora, I'm fine with that. But let's, let's get people involved in this discussion. Let the citizens of Bisbee make that decision and then let the city move on from there. That's the way I see this issue. Thank you.
Set your hand up, Ms. Giacamino.
Yeah, but Joan had hers, I think, first. So go ahead and let Joan speak.
I, oh, I thought she just had your hand on your.
Oh, no, I, I, okay, this is where I'm going to beat a dead horse here because of my teacher background. Again, back to number two, goals and objectives. Identify a contract partner that will be able to. That is what is causing the misleading. They will be able to provide appropriate facilities. That does not indicate that the city is going to allow anyone to use it. That is the, one of the major issues. It's the verbiage in this RFP. Because if you read this as a layman or as a teacher that writes goals and objectives, that's how I read it, that the person who is applying then has to provide an appropriate facility. If the facility is available, then that verbiage needs to be changed. Because the way it reads, and again, I'm writing my own goals and objectives in education, that's what I'm going to have to do. I'm going to have to provide a facility as referenced in the city code. And that makes me think that, oh, crud, you know, what's going to happen to the shelter then? If somebody else gets it, what are we going to do with that building? That was the first thing that went through my, I mean, I'm just saying. Maybe that needs to be switched up, because that's where a lot of the misleading is coming from, too. I don't know, just saying.
Yeah. And going back to the friends, because that pertains mostly to them. They've been told by, by me numerous times and by other members of the council, apparently, that that option is certainly open.
Right.
There shouldn't, there shouldn't be a misunderstanding on that from them.
Well, I'm not just saying them. I'm saying from Joe Public, you know.
Yeah, and anyone, right. And anyone who wants to respond to the RFP can contact me with their questions directly.
So instead of fixing the verbiage?
Well, the, our, yeah. They can contact.
Anytime in our.
Facility, they can have a facility donated. They could ask to use our facility. If they need clarification, they can contact me.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Coleman, but on an RFP, often potential bidders do contact your office with questions.
Yes.
That's not unusual at all.
No. The feasibility study for the shared use path RFP, for example, each of the firms that bid did contact me for clarification.
Questions? Ms. Hanson.
I have a question from Mr. Ledbetter. We, we're talking about regional. If there are dogs that are surrendered or that are in Bisbee or picked up in Bisbee by a citizen and brought to the shelter, all of those numbers would also be included with, or can be included with the numbers that are picked up with the AOC and ordered and, and that, and the money coming from the city can be used for that. Is that correct?
Great question, a complicated answer in that it's going to vary a great deal based upon the specific circumstances involved. Suffice it to say, I think Councilmember Pollock touched upon this a moment ago. It is an important decision to be made as to whether any revenue source could be used for animals outside the city of Bisbee.
Right.
One would assume that if somebody picks up an animal inside the city of Bisbee, who's a Bisbee resident or citizen, that, you know, no one might, no one knows the source of that animal's pedigree, right? And so it'd be appropriate to care and treat that animal, in my opinion. But it becomes more difficult. And again, the shelter doesn't operate exclusively on the money from the city of Bisbee.
Right.
But it's problematic, right, to suggest that those funds are divided between Bisbee animals and non-Bisbee animals. And Councilmember Pollock has identified a very important question. As things currently stand, I could not advise you that taxpayer dollars from citizens in Bisbee could be used for, quote unquote, non-Bisbee animals. That's a very complicated fact circumstance to figure out what is a non-Bisbee animal versus a non-Bisbee animal. And then the shelter, the current operators of the shelter would suggest that perhaps revenue that they're using to, to care for a, quote unquote, non-Bisbee animal would be from another source. Okay, so that would require a bit of a complicated, more complicated look-through as to the source of revenue and how those revenues are being expended. And I think the city manager is asking the appropriate questions from an audit perspective to answer the very questions that you and Councilmember Pollock are now presenting, because those are important questions. Ultimately, the policy decision is yours as to how to expend that. But I can't, as the city attorney, tell you that it would be okay to use city of Bisbee dollars to, for example, and, and Councilmember Giacamino raises an important point about the collaborative nature of shelter operations. I understand that. But it becomes problematic to say a Bisbee taxpayers' dollar could be used to, to care for a city of Douglas animal. That is, that is on its face problematic. And we'd have to think through the process on how that would be okay so that you're not making a gift of city of Bisbee public funds for non-city of Bisbee activities. So again, I'm apologizing to all of you for a long legal answer, but your question begged a difficult answer. But I would assume, in, in distilling it down, a city of Bisbee resident picks up an animal in the city of Bisbee and brings it to the shelter, it seems completely appropriate to me. Because there's no way to say, well, this dog wandered in from Cochise County and outside the city limits. You don't know that. And we don't know that. So I, I'm certain that they've been caring for them, because they, they care a lot about caring for animals. No question in my mind. So, so that said, it's when you start potentially co-mingling funds and using them for non-city of Bisbee animals or outside the city that, again, I need you guys to make an important policy decision, subject to guidance of not gifting public funds.
And there is a surrender fee also. Ms. Giacamino's hand, it's up like that, yeah.
Is it, this is for you, Mr. Ledbetter. It is possible, though, is it not, to indicate in your, in your business, what funds, the, the city funds are being kept separately in this billing, this billing, this billing, versus the donated funds, which is addressing these other animals? Is that possible?
Absolutely. And your city manager should be making those inquiries in order to make that discernment for you, to give you that advice. Is it possible? Absolutely. Is it easy? I don't know, but.
Sorry.
Correct.
Shelter manager, I believe, has a way of, that could separate that out based on region.
Right. And it'll have to pass some reasonable tests and be verified, sure.
Yeah, we're, we're presently not getting that, Ms. Giacamino. So if it can be separated out, then that would be very, very beneficial.
Ooh, cat fight.
In, in fact, essential.
Ms., Ms., Mayor Proton.
This is a question for Mr. Ledbetter. If the, if the population of Bisbee decided that they wanted to have a regional animal care facility and they wanted the city to pay for it or to subsidize it, would that be an initiative that would pass legal review?
Yes, but it must be voted on by all the citizens. That would be beyond council purview.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Higgins?
Um, yeah, some of the things that we're discussing here are pointing out, this is just an observation, not a question. Some of the things that we're discussing here and some of the observations that, that council people are making. You know, the idea of a referendum would push this, would push this back, Lord knows, when that would, when that would come about. A community meeting, maybe, you know, this is COVID time and it's difficult to have a community meeting. But I, but I really feel like we need to move ahead with an RFP, but I think that we need to move a little slower. I think that we need more community input, maybe look into the, what it takes to actually have a referendum. I think that more discussion is needed, more, you know, these questions should, should be, we're not going to write an RFP at this meeting tonight, you know. That's for.
We don't write them.
But I, unless you want to stay here all time. But I, I, I think that a, a, a new RFP needs to be looked at and which addresses some of these things. You know, the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter, they raised quite a bit of money. And I think that, you know, to, to have something in the RFP about separating the city money from the Friends money, you know, I, I, I can see where that would be appropriate. But I, I think that really, anyhow, this is just Bill Higgins' opinion. Bill Higgins would like to take a log pass from the center and pump. And I, I think, I think we should pump right now and, and, and write a new RFP, which is easier to understand and, and which would be more acceptable to the citizens of Bisbee.
Ms. Giacamino?
Um, also, I think it's very important that those involved in, in, I guess, the RFP and in everything, and even maybe us also, that you need, we need to have access to look at the shelter manager before any decisions are made. Ashley, do you have a login to that possibly? An old login? I, I don't know if you're on. Because I, I can't hear you. But anyway.
I did at one time have it. Honestly, it probably burnt up in the fire, all my logins for that, so I can contact Kelly to get that.
I've seen it, because I went in there and looked at stuff. And it's, it's, it gives you some pretty concise information. And it's, I think it would be very useful in decision-making, not only for RFPs, but in the final run, you know, when we decide, you know, the final outcome as a council. I think it's important that everyone really sees what has gone through and in what capacity has gone through the shelter and what the Bisbee friends have actually been doing. And I think some people might be amazed and surprised.
But that's, that's, I, I, I agree with you again, Ms. Giacamino. But that is, going back to what Mr. Ledbetter was indicating, and you're going to find numbers in there of dogs, cats that are coming from outside the area and that these taxpayers in Bisbee are potentially paying for that they shouldn't. And what this RFP is doing is saying, this is what the city of Bisbee requires by law. And what is your bid on this? And then you can do anything above that you want to, get all the donations you can get, et cetera, et cetera. And God bless you, and we're behind you in doing that. But our citizens aren't going to pay for the dogs from Douglas or wherever. That's, that's all. And Ms. Coleman, it, the council does not write RFPs. Only the city manager writes RFPs.
I wasn't saying for writing it. I was actually saying so you can get the general idea of actually how many outside animals versus inside animals. And when we have to make a decision down the road, it'd be nice to be well-versed in it. I'm not saying we're going to write the RFP. I'm just saying that information is very valuable and very informative.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I really didn't mean to cut you off. Ms. Cornada? Would you have the last three months of the shelter reports sent out to the council tomorrow?
Sure, I will do that.
Tomorrow, you'll be receiving three months of reports that we receive from the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter indicating ins and outs. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Pol, Mayor Proton Paul.
I'd like to point out that if the city of Bisbee wants to have a regional animal care facility, they have that right. But we haven't reached that point where we can make that decision. It needs to include all of the citizens of this community so that they, they know that they're going to pay for this humanitarian effort out of their pockets. The city of Bisbee is not responsible for Cochise County and Santa Cruz County and Sonora, Mexico. But if that's what we want to do, I'm fine with that. It just needs to be addressed by the community through a referendum or whatever vehicle exists to make that happen. And we can move from there. I have encouraged the people who run the animal shelter to bid this RFP so that they have an opportunity to continue the work that they're doing, albeit at a lower revenue source. We cannot, at this point in time, afford $80,000 a year when we're faced with the prospect of laying off public workspeople, firefighters, police department personnel, whatever it takes to balance our budget. We are not out of the woods on this economic crisis. It's going to go on for another year at the least. And so the city manager has tough decisions to make about funds that are expended. And she has to make decisions about laying off people if necessary. And right now, $80,000 to the animal shelter is a big decision for her. And I understand that. I am in favor of having the RFP, in favor of the animal shelter bidding the RFP. And if they get it, great, they can, can continue their work and we can move on from there and look at the possibility of becoming a regional animal control facility. But it needs to be done with all the citizens of Bisbee, not just those that are interested in the animal shelter per se. So that's my piece. I'm done.
Anybody else? Ms. Johns?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering what the process would be to have a referendum like Mr. Pollock is talking about.
Actually, what is a, what does it cost to go to, 15,000?
Um, the cost isn't quite as high anymore. The county has really, you know, done a good job in pinpointing the costs. So anywhere from five to eight thousand.
And Mr. Ledbetter, are we allowed to do that other than with the new laws of only on the general election?
No. I, I need to specifically research that, but the short answer is no, we'll be on a general election cycle. So we'll want to figure, I, we, my recommendation is that you figure out interim things and approach it from where things are in terms of existing law and obligation. Create a contract with some entity, perhaps the Friends of Bisbee, and move forward until that time.
So that would be two more years?
Probably. I, again, I haven't specifically researched that particular topic for you, but your instincts, I'm telling you, you're in the 80 percentile of being exactly right.
Yeah.
Yes.
I am waiting, but.
Hold on, Ms. Giacamino.
I am. That's why I was putting my hand down.
No problem. The state legislature, in my opinion, wrongfully sought to limit city council's abilities to do exactly this.
Yeah.
By forcing, whether it's a city council, whether it's a school board, any political subdivision of the state of Arizona, forcing them into these general election cycles.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mary Copacan. Wow. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, I, 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 I just wanted to throw a little, your, your camera's moved enough that I see the top of your head and your hand makes you look like a rooster. that I see the top of your head in your hand, it makes you look like a rooster.
I am.
Okay, cool.
Anyway, um, can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I have a question. Has there ever been an addendum made to that contract, um, about take, uh, certain changes, like taking animals from other places?
No.
There's no addendum anywhere?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question, Ms. Hanson?
There are three addendums, but none of them, most, they were, um, addendums in order to change the amount that year.
So can we get copies of those? Thanks.
Yep, I'll send them out in the morning.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Higgins.
Well, wait a minute. I may have something to say before I move to adjourn. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, exactly what we've accomplished with this work session. Um, I, I guess that, uh, the, uh, it seems to be the consensus here that, um, the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter, um, uh, you know, the, the advice from Mr. Pollak, uh, was, uh, that they should bid on this, uh, and also, uh, include all the other things in their bid that they're willing and able to do. Is, is, is that clear? Am I clear on that? Uh, is that, that, that seems to be what, uh, what you're advising?
Yes, I, I have.
Well, not you, I mean, uh, the entire.
Well, yes, I mean, that's, um, that, that should be common knowledge, but I specifically have talked to them or told them to do that. Miss, uh, Mayor Protem Pollak has, our attorney Jim Ledbetter has. Um, and I don't know who else might have, I don't, that, that I wouldn't know. Ms. Hanson's raised her hand. And so they were encouraged to go ahead and bid. They may be the only bidder, we don't know, but we do know that we will be following the law, and that's what we have to do. That's the purpose of the RFP, when we go back, go back to the, the bottom line.
So, uh, even though, uh, even though, uh, most of the town, um, thinks that the RFP is flawed and a number of council people have, uh, expressed that they think it's flawed and, uh, you, uh, we're going to walk away from here with, uh, with the same RFP, is that, is that, uh, is that, is that what we're saying here?
The RFP for services, Mr. Higgins, typically are those services that are required by the city. And anything up, above that, as they have been doing, they can continue to do. It's just that the city is not going to pay for them to do things above what's required by law. That's all. Anything else? All right, Mr. Higgins, are you up?
I guess if nobody else has anything else to say, uh, then I'll move for, to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Do we, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem Pollack seconded. Those in favor of adjournment signify by stating aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. Stay well and tomorrow at seven, we'll see y'all. Yep.
That's 7:00 PM, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
That, that would be three or four hours before, before you wake up.
That's exactly right.
All right, all. Have a good evening.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.